September 4th, 2024. Special council meeting. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Manager Flynn, hold.
Mayor Mirbido.
President.
President Hesch. Vice President Iribas.
Oh, hi, present.
Pro tem. Mirbido.
Uh, uh, present.
Councilman Hamdick.
Present.
Councilman Lasekki is excused. Councilwoman Axt.
Present.
Councilwoman Bolsnik is excused and junior councilperson Goldfarb excused. Manager Flynn is present. Solicitor Kratz is excused. Brian Junior Madison is excused. Attorney Officer Leyd is excused tonight.
All right, thanks, Brad. All right, so this is a semi-casual, very formal meeting, so I expect you to bring your A-game, everybody. Just quickly, tonight we have interviews for altogether. Look at my list here. Two interviews for Bathborough Solicitor. Now, you see the timeframes on the agenda, which that's subject to change. And then we have two members of the newly formed Stormwater Authority Board that want to be interviewed for potential employment to that. And then, as always, anything needed, council can discuss. So, that being said, our first proposal is from Salzman Hughes. So I'm just going to read this before each interview, so we all are on the same page here. But you're sitting here today because you expressed interest and submitted a formal request to be considered as a Borough Bats' next Solicitor. As you may already know, our current Solicitor, Attorney James Kratz of Stevenson Lee, has submitted his letter of resignation effective December 31st, 2024. Attorney Kratz has served in the role of Bathborough Solicitor for many years. Although Bath sent out an RFP for legal a few years ago, with this RFP, Bath will be hiring new legal counsel. At that time, we just retained Stevenson Lee. We're going to thank Attorney Kratz for his time, effort, and counsel hours of dedication to the Borough. Please know that council has had time to review the packet you submitted and is looking at tonight to ask questions and at the same time, address any questions that you have for us. The decision will not be made tonight by council, but in the very near future. So without further ado, Lee, I'll let you start off and just kind of take it from there.
Well, yeah, first, I want to say thanks very much for the opportunity. We're very fortunate, as our proposal indicates, that we represent a lot of municipalities across the Commonwealth, over 100 at this point, which kind of gives us an ability to pick and choose where we want to put our name in. I was fortunate enough to begin working with Borough on the Stormwater Program, which allowed me to meet Borough staff, engineer, council, and many of you. And through that, I had a great working experience so far. We hadn't really even gone that far, but I've really enjoyed working with elected officials and the staff. So when I learned of the opportunity, there wasn't really much thought as to whether or not we were going to submit. I value long-term relationships. Each of my municipal clients has basically been with me from the beginning, and you become almost like a family. And I think that's really important for a consultant, because you have to care about the people you represent. And that's my foremost concern with my clients. But more importantly, that's my foremost concern with our team. I played a lot of sports growing up. I coached my kids' sports for some unknown reason to this day, but teamwork is very, very important to me. I believe that's the most effective means of representing a client. So in our firm, we've built a very strong team, probably one of the deepest municipal benches in this state. I don't really think there is a firm that can compete with us on two points. That is the depth of the bench and the breadth of services. And with me today, I have Luke. Luke Gibson is on the proposal. Along with Luke, we have Isaac Wakefield and Elizabeth Kramer. So when we talk about breadth, one of the things that's different about our firm is, again, I mentioned, we have 20 municipal practitioners. Those are 20 individuals who practice municipal work nearly every minute of every day. But each of those individuals also has specialized knowledge in various areas of municipal law, because we often serve as special counsel to municipalities who have maybe a more complicated issue that your solicitor doesn't prefer to handle. That can be code enforcement. We represent Lockhaven, for instance, in code enforcement matters, because boroughs often have more complicated code enforcement matters. And it always shocks the elected officials. When you learn how long and how difficult the process is to maybe get to cleaning up a dilapidated property, you start to understand why solicitors might not want to handle the codes things, and we'll flip that to special counsel. We have that in-house. We also handle a significant amount, God forbid, we never have any, but litigation. We're hired by communities across the Commonwealth to represent them in litigation when the need arises. Unfortunately, sometimes that might be the Commonwealth, when we represented Cumberland County and a number of communities in central Pennsylvania to fight bridge tolling litigation that we were successful in stopping throughout the Commonwealth. We have the Stormwater work, which I'm currently working on early on. We've helped over 100 communities across the Commonwealth with their stormwater programs, whether that be fees or just helping their engineer devise a stormwater management program. So I think when you look at the municipal world, a lot of people think that it's just a position for a sleepy solicitor. We looked at it a different way. We had a highly specialized practice doing high-level municipal work as special counsel, but realized with the knowledge we were getting from working with our municipalities, we could pretty substantially expand that practice area to handling municipal work on a day-to-day basis. And that's really how our firm was founded over 25 years ago. My 15 years, I started out in the municipal practice group. I did special counsel work, and over the years, that special counsel work has really driven the growth of the firm into this area. So I know, you know, one of the questions you might have is, there's a little bit of distance between my office in Camp Hill and Bath. We've talked with staff about some ways we might be able to deal with that in light of the new authority we're forming and maybe trying to stack some meetings to cut down on that. We also have the technology, which will allow us to participate in staff meetings and things as necessary via Zoom, if that's the desire. But I also have, I think, at least eight other clients in this general vicinity within roughly an hour that I'm regularly meeting with. I think the last time, the time before the last time I was here, I was fortunate enough, I had a meeting at Lehigh County Authority. I drove here, had an hour meeting, and then I drove to Scott Township and had a three-hour meeting there. This was the best part of that day. Then I drove home, got home a little late, but that is what it is. But I think the other thing that's different about our firm is we're actually really passionate about the municipal practice. I think that's represented by the number of speaking engagements we do on behalf of different associations here in Pennsylvania. We volunteer our time to teach the elected officials what we know that we've gained through our practice. So I think I probably speak 25 times a year between PMAA, the Authorities Association, PSAT, Boroughs Association, PSATS. And because of that, we're often asked on behalf of those associations to help them with brief appellate courts on issues of statewide importance. So we really feel that it's important to give back our time to those associations, because the resources that a Borough, for instance, can get from PSAT, we want that to be right. So we offer a lot of time working with those associations on trainings. We write in their magazines, and we do that pro bono, because we think it not only benefits us, because, yeah, it gets our name out, but we think it benefits our clients, because you're getting the knowledge that we couldn't give you otherwise, but through collegiate conference or whatever it might be. And they're actually really fun. So I enjoy going to conferences and presenting. So I think that gives you a good overview of our firm. One of the reasons we built this proposal, and we always build this proposal, on very specific bases that we identify from what we know of the client. First, you know, I do a lot of work in this area already, so I wanted to be the person that was on the top of this. The next, Isaac Wakefield. Isaac started out as my right-hand man when he started with the firm a couple of years out of law school. He's the smartest attorney I've ever met. He's an incredible litigator, but he's also a very, very good municipal practitioner, so he needed to be part of the team. We also have Luke Gibson. Luke, although he's fresh out of law school, he comes from a municipal family. His mother is actually the Borough manager for one of my clients. We didn't hire him because of that. She told me he was really good. I said it would be a problem if she were lying, and he exceeded those expectations. So we're really happy to have Luke. We also added Luke to the team, because he's recently been tasked with handling a very complicated situation with one of the clients that we took on from another attorney in our firm. A lot of infighting amongst council, which obviously isn't a problem here. There were some difficult staffing issues involving the prior management team that was removed with the new election, and very difficult public. So Luke, through that experience, has really gained a lot of valuable experience, just dealing with, you know, public situations that might get a little unruly. And I think he's done a really nice job in building that temperament that's sometimes needed for the public. So, you know, that's the right reason he is on the team. And then finally, we have Liz Kramer. Liz Kramer joined us about two years ago. Liz is a very important member of the team, because she came from the insurance defense world, where she represented municipalities when they got sued. Municipalities unfortunately get sued more than they should in federal courts under Section 1983, which is basically, don't do things under color of law to an individual that might be problematic. But Liz has a supreme amount of knowledge in that field, so in the event you find yourself in one of those situations, you know, we have someone with over 40 federal board appearances in that specific area. And she's also very, very knowledgeable in the municipal world after, you know, working with us for two years. So, again, we really pieced together the team to tackle what we thought would be the most pressing needs that Bath would have. But to the extent we're wrong, which happens, lawyers don't usually say that, but we're wrong on occasion, and if we're wrong, we've got the other people you'll need to tackle whatever problem that might be. And I think that's really the depth and breadth, or the big advantages that our firm offers that I don't think many firms can really match.
So we start asking questions? I don't know if you wanted to say anything or not.
Introduce yourself.
So we've really hit the high points there. My name's Luke Gibson from Salzman Hughes. I know I'm the young face around here. I was admitted to the bar in Pennsylvania in 2022, just over two years ago now. But ever since then, I've really been burned into the municipal experience, which has been great, like Lee mentioned. You know, that's really been part of my life for a long time. My mom, being the manager in Camp Hill, always telling me about the issues I have and dragging me to public meetings and that sort of thing. So I'm very familiar with this world, and working as solicitor has been a great experience for me, just managing clients and everything like that. So excited for the opportunity.
Okay. I have some questions, but I don't necessarily go first. If anyone else wants to, if not, I can lead off. I don't care.
Sure. So I know you gave us the list of individuals on the team. On a regular basis, would the same person be here for our Monday night meetings?
That, you know, looking at the calendar, that should not be a problem. Obviously, there might be, I might be at the beach. I try to, I try to work that into my, the fourth week of the month, which I'm usually like. But the idea is that we would have a consistent face here, absent a few, you know, needs for scheduling purposes. My kids are getting a little older, and so hopefully, sports are in the future to some extent, but they don't usually play on Mondays.
We also have legal representation at our planning commission meetings? Is that something also that the firm specializes in?
Yes. I have litigated quite a few MPC cases. I do a lot of our developer side work as well. So I kind of know both sides. And, you know, we have actually been hired as special counsel at the insistence of developers to municipalities to make sure project moves through, because a developer doesn't want a technical issue that halts their project either. So we've often been called in by firms, recommended to municipalities to serve as special counsel on development projects. Just recently, and thank goodness it went away, there was a warehouse in Milford, PA, which is up near the New York border. And we were hired because of our specialized knowledge in the MPC, the Municipalities Planning Code, and that is warehouse development on the municipal side. So we do a lot of work in that area. We review a lot of ordinances, and it's, I actually. It was a plow route to planning section, right? Yeah, I wrote the, Luke helped me a lot. I wrote the DCD section, the DCD Solicitors Manual section on the MPC.
So, Lee, how do you communicate with your clients, with the municipalities? Can the Borough dictate that preferred line of communication, or do you have a set procedure?
My first question is, what is your preferred manner? I can tell you what most do and what I've seen work. Obviously, a lot of that will be through your manager, because one of the issues we have with some of our clients, you know, if I have five council members emailing me directly, that can eat up a lot of fees. So we typically, in most of my municipalities, I would say that most of the communication to and from me is with the manager and council president. And, you know, usually, individual council members would bring an issue to the president or the manager, depending on how you prefer to operate, to come to me. Obviously, there might be situations where it's something a little sensitive. Heaven forbid, there's never an issue between you and your manager, but I've had situations where there was an issue with the manager, and that communication was done differently. But in those situations, personnel especially, we often recommend a personnel committee of two council members that would handle that. But it gets driven by you, and I'm happy to offer my suggestions from experience.
All right, others as well.
Just somebody else before I go? Go ahead. I'll go open.
Just a quick question. I know by having sent Sheriff or Solicitor for MS4, it can save us some costs, because you already know the information there when you're sitting over here. What happens if down the line, there's a situation where council doesn't agree with what is going on with the MS4, and now you have that conflict? How does that get in?
So there's something built into the program. There's the divorce mechanism we've talked about under the documents we're putting together for that, where if you guys can't get along any longer, there's a separation process. So that would be the nuclear option. But as it relates to any issue that we can't navigate between Borough and Authority, we would recommend either a conflict waiver, which is probably not the ideal situation in that instance, or we have a number of attorneys we could recommend as special counsel that could assist us working through that. As it specifically relates to stormwater, I have only come close to that issue once, and that is now resolved before it became an issue. And that's actually ongoing, and as of last week, I think it was resolved. So I've not had that experience where we would need to, but it's no different than anything else. Obviously, it would be less likely out here than it would be back in central PA, but I represent a lot of communities in central PA. I've helped a lot of folks establish stormwater authorities, but we just haven't had any instances where we needed to.
That is my biggest concern.
I guess you've worked for an exiting lawyer before, and what have you learned from that experience, taking over from somebody with 20 years' experience at a very comfortable level?
Well, first, most lawyers are prideful. But what I have learned is that there's no more valuable individual than the prior solicitor of a community for that long. Solicitor that's been in a community for that long probably knows more than just about anybody affiliated with the community. So not only can I stand to gain a lot of legal knowledge about the inner workings of the Borough from Mr. Kratz, but I think that I can learn a lot of the intricacies, because every municipality is different. I can learn a lot of the, you know, the particular issues that might not be present in other municipalities. But we've never had an issue working through a transition with another lawyer. And frankly, I don't know if he would be interested in this, but if there are instances where it just doesn't make sense to transition a particular issue, we could obviously work with him and enroll special counsel and assist him as needed to work through that. I know in the little bit of interaction we had on the Stormwaters, you know, front end, I enjoyed working with him. I haven't really had an issue working with any attorney in that situation before, but I would not expect to have any issue in this situation either. I've worked with a lot of attorneys at his firm in other areas, frankly. So I know a lot of his colleagues already through, in my area, they represent a lot of developers, so I'm usually across the table from them, but I have a lot of contacts at the firm as well.
Sam?
Sure. Just a feed off of those questions. So what does your transition look like? How do you see that? What's the timing? You know, when council selects a new solicitor, is it, do you work with Mr. Kratz right away? You know, how do you see that happening? What does that look like?
Ideally, you know, I know he's stepping down in essentially January 1. Ideally, we would start that transition process now. I think that the longer runway you have, the more efficient you can make. You know, if we start doing this December 1, it's going to be a lot of cost at once, and that's not efficient, so it's usually a higher cost. But by doing it over time, you know, we can identify the sort of, you know, these are the five items that you're going to have to run with day one. Here are the other things that we can transition over time. We can also work with him on transferring the documents. Hopefully, digital would be an option, because I'm trying to get rid of paper. But those are the type of things that would really depend on, you know, what Mr. Kratz and I are able to work out over that transition period. I think you guys are, and he was very nice to give you this amount of warning. It's not, I don't think it's difficult. It can be difficult, but I think with time and planning, it can usually be a pretty smooth situation.
How do you keep track of projects for your clients, most specifically municipalities? I ask this because Bath, although we're small, I've been told numerous times that we're very active. Currently, council prefers a list of pending legal requests and paperwork, and where you are in the process of each of those. Do you have a set guideline or rules?
So we, again, no, we do not have a set, because each of my clients is different, and each of my clients changes as elected officials change. For instance, Camp Hill, we use them as an example. A larger Borough, in terms of population, but size-wise, they're about a square mile. So I would expect similar issues. But for Camp Hill, previously, when I first started at Camp Hill, we did not do a solicitor's report. They had an interim manager, who was an elected official from a larger township, and he liked the idea of a solicitor's report, so we started preparing a solicitor's report. Then, new group came on, and they don't need a solicitor's report anymore, so I don't have to provide one. But we generally have offered to the municipalities we represent to prepare a monthly solicitor's report. Obviously, the timing of submission of that, we'd work out with staff in terms of when your packets go out and those things. We typically do that at no charge. One, it's usually not a huge lift for us to update the solicitor's report each month. There will be things that are constantly rolling over. There might be a handful of things, but there's a benefit to us to keeping that list as well. The other thing we have is a weekly Friday lunch.
I unlocked the door. Is that a knock?
I didn't see anyone.
I heard that.
I heard it.
Okay.
I heard it too, but didn't see anyone.
Thank you. Door's unlocked.
So we also have a weekly lunch on Fridays in the office, and we're moving toward a sort of a client management process where, you know, we're going to spend that lunch, the first part of that lunch, identifying, you know, these are the 25 things that must get done by next Friday. That way, we are adequately staffing each of those issues, and we're working on that management system in terms of the actual backend, how we track all of that now. But I think the solicitor's report is the best way we do that. And what that looks like is something we'll probably sit down, if we're fortunate enough to be selected, with Brad, to understand what you all would like. You know, I'm envisioning sort of an area-based report that is then sort of, you know, listed chronologically in terms of where things are at. So, you know, zoning, planning, codes, you know, whatever those areas of law are, and then either the most pressing, or if we can do it chronologically within each of those areas. Some of them are easy to track, right-to-know people. I have these deadlines.
Yeah. Currently, you have like a color code system, and the colors mean different timeframes.
We'll work with whatever you guys need.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you asked one of my questions. She asked the other question. I had the three.
All right, Doug?
I think bounce, like Borough Law and Borough's intent versus individual town residents and their points of view and what they're trying to accomplish? Or is it more or less, I represent the Borough, that's hired me?
I'm probably a little more in the middle than a lot of folks. So at the end of the day, the Borough Code, the Municipalities Planning Code, you know, whatever code, that controls. And municipalities by law, Dillon's Law, if you want to really get nerdy and look into that, that Dillon's Law says municipalities only have those powers expressly delegated to them by the state. So you can't do anything that the state says you can't do. So that's the first premise that we have to operate under. However, I learned early in my career that when you represent a municipality, my goal is to say yes. So my goal to you, as a client, is to find a way to get you to the endpoint you want. But I have to advise you, if it's not something that we can do. So I think that one of the differences, though, is that we try to be creative. Well, we try to come up with creative solutions to get Borough Council to the yes point that they want to be at, in a way that complies with the Borough Code, meaning the big one, the Borough's Code, and then if it's a planning issue, whatever issue it is, within any of the enabling statutes for that code. But at the end of the day, I don't like to say no. I like to say no to my kids. I don't like to say no to my clients. So we try to find a way to get you to that solution you're looking for.
Shane? All right. Shall we?
Go ahead.
All right. All right. Sure. All right, so social media is a common place in society anymore, although at times, it is an endless black hole. It seems more and more like one of the best avenues to disseminate information out to residents. Have you dealt with any specific cases or issues involving social media with your clients, municipalities, and residents of municipalities?
More than I would care to admit. You know, we've dealt with helping a lot of folks craft social media policies. You know, more and more, I feel like not only are the elected officials in the crosshairs, but the consultants are in the crosshairs. So I've had wars waged against me via social media, because, let's face it, if somebody puts a, wants to put a warehouse in your community, and I tell the board that, well, it's a permitted use, and 300 people in the community don't like a warehouse, I'm the bad guy. So, you know, I was the one that had to get the negative Google reviews, which was an interesting one. I had a broken leg at the time, and I had to wear a tennis shoe, because I couldn't put a regular shoe on, and that was in all the Google reviews for our firm. They didn't match, apparently. It ended up, the lady was a nurse, found out about my broken foot and apologized profusely. But the other side of that is, we've had to litigate situations where a mayor posts things on their Facebook page, and it was a problem, because then there was a request via the right-to-know law for those posts. The posts were then deleted. And the problem was that there is a very difficult situation with getting records from Facebook. They don't respond to subpoenas. So you're in a bad position when you try to get records for things on Facebook that don't exist any longer. So we try to tackle it from an education perspective, because we've had a lot of experience on the backend of social media problems. So we try to work with crafting a social media policy for staff, elected officials, et cetera, to follow. And that's usually the best way to handle it. But it's an ever-changing area that's really... But it's an ever-changing area that's really difficult to navigate, but we have helped a lot of communities work through it as best we could.
Okay. Miano, you have a question you want to ask? Do you want to ask it now, and then I'll keep going?
Yeah. Lee, you mentioned that you have right-to-know. Do you have a specific person in our team of, I believe there's five, you said, right?
It would depend. Yes.
Anybody specialize in that?
Yes. So in terms of litigation side, both myself and Isaac have done a lot of right-to-know law litigation, whether that be through the O R process. I've done in-camera reviews for redacted documents. I've litigated that through the Commonwealth Court. I've litigated from the Common Pleas Court to the Commonwealth Court. Isaac has done the same. In terms of an individual request, that would probably go to Luke, who has, unfortunately, and has the new client, he has a lot of vexatious requests, probably 50 from the same individuals. So, you know, a lot of that work, we will provide the borough with our typical forms for a grant, a denial, partial grant, partial denial. We work from a set of forms, and the way we typically suggest doing it is have the forms crafted by the open records officer, and then we review them. But we do generally ask that if there are redactions and things like that, that we be, that we be offered an opportunity to review those redactions before they're made because the problem with right-to-know challenges is that if the borough is found to have acted in bad faith, they can be subject to costs from the challenger. So we try to avoid the mere potential for that. So again, I think one of the things you'll hear throughout is we like to deal with things on the front end. It's a lot cheaper than trying to deal with them on the backend. So we try to work on a lot of those issues up front and establish processes because processes avoid problems.
So to piggyback on what you were...
Yeah, just one more. We'll meet the team, our team, correct, before they, we'll get to meet your team?
Yeah.
Our team?
Well, so, let's clarify. We have over 20 in the firm.
Right.
We have nine in my office that do this.
No, but the team that you've mentioned for us.
So these four, yes. We can certainly do that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Just to piggyback off the mayor's question, apologies, counsel, we're going a little out of order, but in regards to right-to-know, as you may or may not be aware, we do have a, we hired a firm for specifically for right-to-know requests. So although you have quote-unquote expert, you know, that can handle that in your firm, are you open to working with an outside firm that we've already?
And maybe this is an offline discussion, but do you want to share who the firm is?
Yeah, I mean, what's the law for me? I know the guy's name.
Schnay Legal Services in Lititz.
Okay, I haven't worked, so I've used...
Chad Schnay.
I haven't worked with Chad. So, full disclosure, my wife works for the, for the company that owns Penn Live. So Advance Media, they own the High Valley Live.
Right.
So they use Craig Stottemeyer, who's considered to be the right-to-know expert, and I work a lot with Craig in his role as the attorney for the Freedom of Information Group for Pennsylvania. So I do, I haven't hired special counsel to do right-to-know for any of my clients, but I've worked with a lot of experts in the right-to-know field, and I'm happy to continue doing so.
Well, I mean, it'd be something to look at, too, because if we're getting a group of individuals and they can handle all the requests.
Exactly my point.
Because our lawyer was consumed with our right-to-know requests, but if we have a group of individuals that can focus on those right-to-know requests, we might not need separate. Just something to look for the future.
Yeah, we have, I mean, I'd say currently in our office, doing the day-to-day right-to-know, in my Harrisburg or Camp Hill office alone, I think we have three associates who predominantly handle the day-to-day of our right-to-know requests. We represent Capital Region Water, which is one of the largest sewer and water providers in the state. You can only imagine how many right-to-know requests they get. So we design processes to be more efficient. So you would likely be assigned one person that would handle all the day-to-day right-to-know, but have the benefit of the depth on the litigation side and the appeals and all of those things if needed.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, so I did butt the line there a little bit, but Manny, you would be next, if you have any this round?
No.
Doug?
No, I think I'm ready.
Brad?
Yeah, same. Brad, anything you want to ask this round?
Yeah, sure. Lee, how many developers does Salzman Hughes represent outside of the municipal side? Do you represent both sides?
But we've substantially cut back on that side of the development aisle. And for instance, right now, our firm revenue is 60% municipal. We have a real estate group, we have a litigation group, we have an employment group, we have all these other groups, but even when you factor in the land use, it's, and I would say that's very, very much clustered in central Pennsylvania. There are some developers that we've been working with in central Pennsylvania for decades. We still do their work, but I don't represent any developers that I could imagine would have a project in this area.
So it's been more of a shift towards the municipal side instead of the private development side in representation terms?
It was before my time, but honestly, a lot of those warehouses in the Carlisle area that we were involved with, and that's not exactly fun when our Carlisle office is right next to all the warehouses, causes some issues getting to and from work. So maybe there were some part-searching done by some of my elder partners.
All right. Michelle. Anyone? All right. So what steps, if any, do you reach out to your clients to advise on updated procedures and practices? Obviously, while working on a case, recommendations occur, but if you're working on something for another municipality that you see potentially in the future may pose a problem for the Borough of Bath, would you be open to sharing with Bath the development or something new without Bath necessarily reaching out to you?
So we do municipal blasts. COVID's a great example. I think we sent out 70 municipal blasts to our municipal clients during that time because of all the changes that were occurring, the ARPA money. I can't even remember how many blasts we sent out about ARPA. We don't bill for those. We also regularly review the, it's like the lawyers, periodical, and in it, they have cases and often zoning, planning, right-to-know cases will be listed there. If my paralegal reviews that identifies a case, that generally, an email gets sent out to all of us in the office, and then we typically have one associate craft a summary or email blast that either gets sent out to the entire group of municipal clients, or if we can particularize it to a subset of those municipal clients, they will be the only ones to get it. We also have a monthly municipal group meeting at which we talk about those things. And, you know, at the end, we run down and we say, okay, you know, Luke, you're going to write this one, Lee, you're going to tackle this one, Iden, you're going to tackle this one, Liz, you're going to take this one, and then we distribute that amongst the groups. So we feel there's a lot of added value there, but at the same time, we know about it, we should, we should share it with our clients, and I don't need to nickel and dime for that kind of thing.
I have one more, if you have.
Just one more. How many clients do you have in the Lehigh Valley?
So I went through and roughly calculated.
I thought you said eight before. Did you say eight?
I believe it's eight. We have some that are, what are we going to define it as? And some that are, we've been kind of work, I'm engaged, but we haven't actually begun work. But currently, I'm obviously working for Bath, working for Lehigh County Authority, working for Palmer Township and Palmer's Authority that I help set up. We're working with Nazareth Borough Municipal Authority. We're working with City of Scranton, which is a little, a little outside of here. We also do a lot of work for Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority, which is a big sanitary authority in Luzerne. And Toncanic is not really here, but I...
Family.
I represent Toncanic's authority, and I go up there on occasion because they take me to lunch, and, you know, I can, I can cruise through here. So I will say that we are being regularly contacted about becoming more active in the eastern part of the state, and we are looking at some options for better serving our clients in this area with a more local presence. We don't yet know where that will be, but it's something that, because of the level of work that we are doing here, it makes a lot of sense. 78s, a lot of fun to drive a lot.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you.
Not quite as bad as 20.
True.
So I have one more question, but Sam and Doug, if there's anything you want to ask? No, Doug?
No.
All right. You kind of touched on this already, Lee, but you don't necessarily have examples, but my question was, what are some alternatives to going to court that you prefer, you have tried, that has been successful?
Um, we've really tried everything. You know, at the end of the day, I'm a litig, I'm trying to move a little bit away from litigation because the municipal world and the litigation world are at, you know, 7:00 AM to midnight. That's a long day. So the difficulty is that often you can't avoid litigation. But I think codes enforcement's a great example. That's the last resort. We will work a lot with your codes enforcement folks to work on ways that we can tackle the problem short of going to litigation because it's going to be very expensive. But the thing that we've found that's most successful in avoiding litigation almost across the board, again, are having those policies and procedures that are in place. Collections, you know, on utilities, another great example. You know, with the successful programs that we've been involved with on collections, they have a process, they follow, and that has led to a lot, a significant reduction in the number of liens that have had to be filed, actions that have had to be filed. But I think the biggest deterrent for me is just, you guys don't want to be in litigation. I know how expensive litigation is to municipalities. I like to avoid litigation because a lot of times it's a 50/50 thing. So whatever we can do to avoid that, we try to, we try to get there, and we would rather spend a little extra money upfront to avoid litigation by exploring various avenues. You know, if there's certain areas that, you know, we'd like to discuss, we can, but I think it's kind of going to be almost a scenario-by-scenario response.
Those are the questions I had at this time, and if counsel has any. Brad, do you have any more?
Lee, just one other. We spoke about Liz's 40 cases in federal court. You also have litigation experience. What was the outcome generally of those cases?
I will toot my horn a little bit. So the tolling litigation that we did for Camp Hill was a statewide thing. The state, through the public-private partnership program, was going to start tolling bridges to pay for their construction projects. The problem was, everybody quickly realized that that would just result in all of the trucks especially diverting into smaller municipalities. They would exit 83 in my area. So we filed an injunction against the state. This was a program supported by the governor. It was a billion-dollar program. So I have a billion-dollar victory now. Now, it kind of, let me tell you, I don't like driving across 83 right now because the bridge needs to be replaced, and I shut down their funding mechanism. So I think about that more than I should. They figured it out in this budget cycle, but that was a huge victory. Not, well, for instance, Isaac is one of the litigators. He's also, he's our negative Nancy. He didn't think we had a chance. Alana, who's another litigator in our firm who helped on that case, she was a little more lukewarm, and I was hard-charging. I knew we were going to win. I knew we had it. Isaac's actual cross-examination won us the case, I'll be honest with you, in Commonwealth Court, but it was a resounding victory. We were contacted by firms all across the state thanking us, municipalities were thanking us. The most difficult part of that representation was all the work I had to put in on the front end to get all of the communities to buy in and put up money. That included Cumberland County and all its surrounding municipalities. It was a lot of me going to night meetings to ask them to pay money. But at the end of the day, Camp Hill led the charge. We put together a war chest of $140,000, and we were successful in defeating a billion-dollar project that would have impacted people all across the Commonwealth.
Any more questions?
I'm good. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so just one thing. So we're a very small borough, obviously, right? So you would think that, you know, we have our Monday night meetings and, you know, it's all sunshine and rainbows, but it's not. We're going through very difficult times now, which I'm sure you're aware of. So are you, are you aware of the situations, the obstacles that Bath has right now?
Yes.
And the challenges that you may come into? It's not, you know, it's messy right now, right? So I just want to be aware that, you know, you know that coming into it, there are a lot of challenges right now.
I 100% understand that. I've done my background research. The one thing I would say is that that's, obviously, maybe not to this level, but boroughs are particularly susceptible to that, that, you know, there are a lot of people living in close proximity, and that is a common issue we have with boroughs. I mean, we represent Chambersburg Borough, which is by budget, I think, the sixth-largest community in the state, but it has gas, electric, sewer, water, stormwater, so it has all of these utility things. But, you know, biggest issue they have in Chambersburg, code enforcement. So...
As he walks out the door.
Do you guys time that or something?
So, you know, I think that, that, that's an issue that we're prepared to handle.
Good question, Michelle. I guess turning the tables on us, right, how the tables turn, tables have turned. Do either of you have any questions for any of us up here?
No, I don't think so. Like I mentioned earlier, I'll let Luke ask any he has, but I think that, you know, we've, it's been a little unique in that we've had an opportunity to get to know you at some level prior to submitting, and I think that that made the decision pretty easy. I know that, I talked to Brad, and I was like, send it, we're submitting, and that was, that was really helpful to me. Again, like I said, I, we have a lot of really great clients. We don't, we don't really need to take on anymore, but we're trying to be selective and take those clients that we'll have for, hopefully, until I retire. That's our goal.
How many years is that?
I like cars. I like cars a lot, so I'll be working a while.
Cars and beaches.
Cars and beaches.
I have to keep my wife happy.
Yes, you do.
She gets her beach, she gets her car.
That's how, that's how we try to work.
I know we're up on our, our time here, but Luke, is there anything you wanted to ask us while you're here?
Nothing else for me, but thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming along.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and now, see you when you get in contact with us.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Lee.
All right.
Bye.
Nice meeting you, Luke.
Bye, Luke.
Five minutes?
Yep.
Yes, they are. In the foyer, yeah.
Let's do a five-minute break, and we'll resume at eight, I don't know, five minutes from now.
65?
There you go. Sounds good.
Eight?
Six fifty-five.
Next to this, I don't know.
You knew?
All right, so we'll come to the end of this session. Gentlemen, I'm just going to read a quick little intro, and then we'll get into it. So obviously, you're visiting us here today because you expressed an interest. You submitted a formal request to be considered as a Borough of Bath's next solicitor. As you may already know, our current solicitor, Attorney James Kratz of Stevenson Lee, has submitted his letter of resignation effective December 31, 2024. Attorney Kratz has served in the role of Bath Borough Solicitor for many years. Although Bath sent out an RFP for legal a number of years back, decided to stay with Stevenson Lee, in regards to this RFP, Bath will indeed be hiring new legal counsel. I want to thank Attorney Kratz for his time, effort, and counsel hours, and dedication to the borough. Please know that counsel has had time to review the packet they submitted and is looking at tonight to ask questions and at the same time address any questions you have. The decision will not be made tonight, however, but in the very near future. The decision will not be made tonight, however, but in the very near future. Okay?
Thank you.
So that's what we're going to do, gentlemen. The floor is yours and we'll take it from there.
Sure, so you have the packet, you don't, you don't need me to hand anything out?
I'll take it.
Any extras?
If you have an extra, I'll take it.
Oh boy.
I love all the ones.
Two so far, yep.
I'm the unprepared one, thank you. I do have it though, I didn't need it.
Did you want to set the tone?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. Are you recording, Brad?
Yes.
We're recording if that's all right.
That's fine. So, so my name is Patrick Armstrong. This is Colby Grimm. We're with Grimbean and Thatcher. I don't know if you're familiar with Grimbean and Thatcher. Grimbean and Thatcher has a pretty large municipal department. We represent municipalities down in Chester, Delaware, Bucks, Montgomery, all the way up to Monroe County. I represent somehow Dolphin, Lebanon, and Lehigh County. What we did, what, what Grimbean and Thatcher did a while ago was we started developing municipal practice and, and we decided as a firm a while ago that we're not going to represent developers. So you'll see that none of our clients are developers. We strictly represent municipalities for a purpose. I mean, the, the reason is it's hard to do both sides when you have developers and development within municipality. There's always, it's inevitable there's going to be a conflict. So we made the decision as a firm years ago that we were just going to represent the municipality side and turn away any work that would come in the door with respect to development or developers. So I've been, I've been with Grimbean probably twenty years now. And I've, I started and I'm still in their municipal department. I represent one borough, McCounji Borough out in Lehigh County, and I represent a number of townships. My practice is mainly the Lehigh Valley, Monroe, and I go a little bit west into Dolphin and Lebanon County. Colby, I'll let him introduce himself, but he's also in the municipal department. We probably have about five, six attorneys that do municipal work in our, in our firm. I don't know what the big ticket items are with Bath, but chances are we've been through it or handled it for other municipalities that we've represented in the past. You don't have a police department?
No.
No? So that's a, I don't say that's a good thing, but it's from a management perspective, it decreases the number of issues that may come up. So.
We have a good relationship with state police though.
Okay.
We're.
Good.
Sorry you interrupted.
No, no, that's fine. Do you have a sewer authority or is?
Yes.
You do. And you have a separate solicitor for the sewer authority?
Yeah, it's a separate authority. They have their, right, they have their own representation.
So we represent townships, boroughs, municipalities, authorities, sewer authorities, water authorities. We represent regional police commissions throughout the eastern part of the state. We, I mean, I, what, do you have any questions for me with respect to the firm's background or?
I, I have more like, not background, more just general questions, procedural, those types of things.
Sure, so, uh, I'll let Colby introduce himself. But like I said, the majority of my practice is municipal. I do, I do litigation as well. I represent a hospital down in Bucks County. I do all their workers' comp defense. And I have a history in litigation prior to coming to Grimbean. So whenever our municipalities end up in litigation, whether it be a land use appeal or employment, which it sounds like you may not have a significant concern with respect to employment law. But I'll, I, as well as a few other attorneys in the firm, run with the litigation, run with the employment defense of our municipal clients. But I'll let Colby introduce himself before I guess you start asking some questions.
Hi, how you doing? Colby Grimm. I represent kind of a berry of municipalities and authorities. I represent three smaller boroughs, Silverdale Borough, Chumbersville Borough, and Richland Town Borough. Each of them have either a water department or a sewer department. I also represent three authorities, two of which have both water and sewer authorities and one that just has a sewer authority. So mine is a little bit less than Pat's. I actually started as a real estate attorney until about two thousand and eight when it died. And then I picked up more municipalities. I now split my time between municipalities and real estate, which is both. But the good thing is, is that a lot of things that you deal with, with municipalities, deal with real estate and so the two kind of go hand in hand, which I have, so.
Okay. Right. I know some of us have questions here, so Michelle, do you want us, if you're all right, can we start asking questions?
However, however you want to run it, it's fine with us.
Yeah, we'll just shoot through some questions and a couple of rounds and.
Sure.
You know, feel free to interrupt or ask questions about social, you lead off again.
Sure. So being that there is a team for representation purposes to our monthly meetings, is it always going to be you or someone from your firm? What does that look like? Or is it constantly going to be a change or depending on what we're talking about that night?
No, we prefer to, so you want to have the same face pretty much at every meeting. We don't want to mix that up to a certain extent. Colby and I, for purposes of Borough of Bath, we would be the two individuals that would primarily be representing the borough and providing the work product to the borough. We were just talking a little bit ago about you meet the, the second Monday of the month and the, I guess every other second Wednesday of the month?
Right.
And you, do you want us, would you want us to attend your planning commission meetings or is this strictly the?
Well, that would also be something up for discussion because Mr. Kratz is our planning commission attorney. So he may not stay on for that as well.
Okay, okay. So I mean, obviously when we have a firm that, we have a pretty large municipal department, everyone operates under the first, second, third, fourth days of the, of the month. So our, our nights are pretty packed, so we just have to coordinate to make sure that we're available. For the borough, for your council meetings, the, the second Monday could be either myself or Colby and the, and the Wednesday would likely be me. And I, I think that's more of a preference. I mean, we would probably start with maybe one of us attending the Mondays and if, maybe if you want us to alternate. But ultimately it would be what you would want. But you wouldn't be seeing either any face other than Colby or myself unless obviously we both had a conflict or if we're out of town or, or some other reason. That would be the intent.
How do you communicate with the borough? Can the borough dictate that preferred line of communication or do you already have set procedures that you prefer?
Every municipality is different. Some municipalities, I get a text on a Saturday night or a phone call. And other municipalities, they're, they only reach out to me nine through five and it's only one individual. It's, it's the preference of the council. If you want just one point person, you know, you just have to, you just have to let us know. If, if, if you all want to be able to reach us at any hour of the day, you know, that's, again, we're available, but it, it's ultimately up to you as a, as a council. And it doesn't matter if you call, you text, you email. All, we do all of it and it depends on what municipality it is.
Okay. Sounds good.
Manny?
The third Monday of the month is the planning commission meeting, so that would also be one of the two of you?
So.
If that would go there.
Yes, it would, if, we, we didn't talk about the planning commission. I have, like I said, I represent, you said the third Monday. I do have McCounji Borough Council that night. So unless, I mean, there's always possibly I can talk to my other client and see if they're okay with someone else sitting in. So it might not be me on that Monday, the third Monday, it could be, it would be Colby.
But want to be available.
Correct. And if you, if you don't like, if, if you prefer just one of us, I mean, we're open to that as well. We just, we always, it's inevitable that someone will have a conflict. So we always take a team approach. There's always a primary, secondary, and obviously there's backup behind us. But for Borough of Bath, this is, this would be the, it would be the two of us.
Okay.
Doug?
I assume that you've worked with other boroughs before with, where they, where you found exiting while you're leaving and you're taking over with somebody who's leaving with tons of experience and what like within the borough. Just wondering what have you learned from that and what is like the transition?
Well, I've worked with Jamie a lot. Jamie's a great guy. I, I feel whoever you go with, he's gonna, it's gonna be a smooth transition. He's gonna, he's gonna make sure everyone gets, whoever it is, he's gonna make sure they get all the information they need, all the files they need, and the history and the background and where all the bodies are buried. He's gonna, he'll let them know what they're stepping into. And the reason I say that is because, you know, there are times that we have taken over a municipality and it's not this type of a smooth transition. It's usually, uh, there's something, there's a hornet's nest and there's a really big issue going on and they need help. So they, they'll bring in, like a firm that really primarily focuses on municipal practice. And sometimes we walk into that and it's a nightmare for the first six to ten months, but then it settles down and we get through it. So this is a little different than the normal, you know, bringing in a new solicitor approach, which is refreshing. But Jamie, he's a great attorney, great guy. I get along with him. I have no doubt whoever you go with, the transition will be smooth.
Jamie, I know this is my last question, but it's sort of into, so, so obviously we're a very small borough, right? But like I was saying earlier, we're not all sunshine and rainbows. So you are walking into a bee's nest right now. And I'm sure you're aware, maybe you're not aware, but just that you're prepared that you're not coming into this, you know, easy, small, little borough. There's a lot going on right now for us. Correct.
Sam?
You guys are asking all the time.
All right, now Michelle, I could technically skip you because you did do a second round already.
There's no right or wrong, just do your thing.
Go ahead, you can go again. So we keep the momentum going here.
Okay, thanks. I don't remember what, I didn't write it down. I can also come up with my head, sorry.
All right. Okay. How do you keep track of your projects? I ask this because although, as Michelle had said, we have a lot of things going on, but aside from things going on, we're very active in, in other ways as a borough. Counselor prefers a list of the pending legal requests and where you are in that process. Does you have a set procedure for that or again is that discretion of the client?
It's the discretion of counsel. So we have, what I've done for certain municipalities is a solicitor's report on a, on a, you know, if you want a monthly, if you want a, like every other month. But it'll be basically an outline of all the pending legal items that are in my queue and where they're at. Kind of like a summary, a written summary. But that's, that's dependent upon the client. Some clients don't want that. They don't want you to spend the time with it. Some clients really do want that updated approach to make sure they know that you're, you know, that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you. Manny? We did have another one.
Did they work, it was for a different reason?
Yes, for a totally different reason. We'll be up to it in a moment.
Okay.
Doug?
How do you balance borough law and borough's intent versus individuals that live in the town and the residents here? Or is it more that I represent the borough and that has hired me?
So we're your solicitor, right? We're going to give you legal advice. We don't get the vote, right? We don't set policy. We, sometimes, you know, those lines are blurred, but we, I try. Sometimes it's hard, you know, you're going to get a council member to try and get, get you to give a legal opinion that says this or you're going to get a resident. But we, we're this listener and we're supposed to give you an objective report in summary of the law and what you can do, what you can do, what you can't do, what the case law is on the topic, what the statutory requirements are on the topic. But we don't get a vote. So your question is, do, do we, we never try to be used as a weapon between council members if you're trying to get something done or we never, I mean, if you have a resident issue and if a resident's, you know, making, if there's an issue between the borough and a resident, we'll give you legal advice, likely in a situation that it's maybe adversarial. That'll be an executive session, executive session, legal advice, legal privileged communications, but we're going to give you the law. And ultimately, if, if, if it's a situation where, where it's litigation, you know, we're going to represent the borough to the best of our ability. Whatever the law is, we'll have to defend it or prosecute it. Colby, I don't know if you have anything?
I, I would just like to say, I think it's our job to provide options. And, you know, if you have five cards, you can flip over any card you want. And whatever card you want us to flip over, we're going to do the job for you to do it. I mean, that, that's how I perceive our job. Now, whether you're saying, do we take into consideration residents? Sure, we do because you're sitting here because you care about your residents. I mean, so I kind of thought that maybe that was the question that you're kind of hearing. You, you always have to think of your residents as well. But our job is not necessarily to think about those individuals. It's to provide you as a council, who you're supposed to be thinking about those residents. And we're going to tell you where you have to act in.
I think yes, that, that.
Do you both specialize in right to know or do you have a specific person on the team that does right to know?
I think we've all dealt with right to know. I, coming out of the gate when they amended that all back in two thousand and nine, I, I probably ran with it out of the gates, but since then everyone's had to deal with appeals, not only to the Office of Open Records. If it's, if it's a serious right to know appeal that the municipality feels strongly on, nine times out of ten, you're going to end up before the court of common pleas and even beyond that. So Office of Open Records is great, but sometimes you kind of know where it's going to tend down. So yeah, we've all dealt with right to know, from coming in the door, responses to the appeal of the Office of Open Records all the way up through Commonwealth Court.
So I have a question to that and I know you may have a question.
Michelle just took my right to know question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have, do you have anything else you want to ask?
It's okay. I do have something else. So it would just be one of you. There's not three other, four others, just the two of you that are going to handle Bath, correct?
Correct.
There's no other?
I mean, there is, I mean, there's always.
Should there be an issue?
As, as the face, yes. If there is something behind the scenes that we feel somebody can do something better, like if you're taking that right to know and we felt somebody in our firm had dealt with that right to know request before, we may get them to step up to do that. I don't think they would necessarily come here, but they might help with the paperwork or they may have help with behind the scenes. So when we say, when we say that, what's great about the team approach is that you have four other people that you can bounce things off and somebody's done.
Right.
Yeah, and, and let's, I want to be, actually I want to follow up on that. If you are going, if you're gonna, if you're thinking about buying a huge piece of open space, we have people in our real estate department that are probably best to take that to closing. Right? If, if there are cert, we have, I say we have a big municipal department, but it's a general practice firm. So we have real estate, we have business, we have tax. There's all kinds of attorneys in our office that if there is a specialty that you're dealing with that, you know, we could probably handle it, but.
You're going to put the person on it, right?
Someone who deals with tax law, who's someone who deals with finance or someone who deals with real estate on a more regular basis. That's a, a perfect example where you may get more of an interaction with that attorney as opposed to me.
Right. Besides McCounji, any other Lehigh Valley municipalities?
So our firm represents McCounji Borough. We represent Williams Township. We represent East Rock Hill and West Rock Hill. They're, they're down in a lot for Bucks.
Any other boroughs?
Boroughs be Quakertown Borough, which is, it's a larger, it's a larger borough.
Right.
Richland Town Borough, Chumbersville Borough, and Silverdale Borough, which is really small.
That's it? That's all I have? Thanks.
Just putting the line and then Brad will get to you about any questions you have. But in regards to the right to know, Bath had obtained additional legal counsel in regards to the right to know. That's outside Stevenson Lee, Attorney Chad Schnee, Schnee? I'm sorry, I was.
You got it.
From Litts.
From Litts.
I guess my question to you is, should we continue to retain Chad? Are you willing to work with him or you prefer to keep that all in-house if you were to become our solicitor?
So, I mean, that's ultimately up to counsel. I don't, none of my municipalities have far, had formed out the right to know piece. Sometimes municipalities, employment law, sometimes they farm it out. But I'm trying to think, I don't know if any of my clients, I don't know if any of your clients have ever formed out the right to know. I mean, if you want to keep him, obviously we'd work, we'd work with him. Yeah, if there was a conflict of interest, but that wouldn't be on a right to know basis.
Yeah, that was kind of like my question, if it's like, yeah, we can work together, which is what my assumption was going to be.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
But I didn't know, you know, everybody's different, so I didn't know if you maybe have a preferred.
It's your preference. We have enough individuals that we can usually handle everything. Even the largest townships, we represent Bradner Township and that takes a small army just to do all of the little things that are there on a monthly basis. So there is probably ten hands in that. So, you know, it all depends on you. But as Pat said, it's up to you. Ultimately, you're going to make that decision. And if you think it's more smooth with just having us represent that or if you feel that you want to continue because you like his work, that's, that's up to you.
And without knowing specifically, if it's, you have a right to know officer, right? You have.
Correct.
And we provide, I mean, we can provide as many, I mean, there's a lot of form letters, there's form denials, there's all types of trading we can provide to you. If it's, I don't know if he's come, if he's handling like in the door request or if it's more of like on the appeal.
We just got excessive. Jamie couldn't handle the rest of the stuff because it was consuming his every breath.
Gotcha.
Some of the other, other things that the borough needed to do.
The right to know law has not been, has not checked in municipalities.
No.
Don't worry, that's for...
Right, you, in the last...
Sure. Pat or for Colby, or both. Litigation, terms of litigation, what were the outcomes of some cases that you may have had in the last X number of years?
Well, I guess I'll start. Without naming clients, there was a Bucks County Township, a fairly large quarry. And the residents came up in arms and the municipality decided to fight, you know, the quarry, so to speak. There were a number of issues, big use, there were some zoning issues. So, we took that all the way up to the Commonwealth Court. And there were some twists and turns and surprises in that case, but, I mean, today, the quarry's not in operation. Now, that's not to say in five years it won't be, but on your typical land use appeals or a subdivision and land development application, you know, those are, those get taken up through the Commonwealth Court. I'd say if you, if you would, if you were to look on Lexis and type Ingrid V. Thatcher, there's a number of cases that were involved in both ways. I mean, but we've been, we've been part of creating land use law throughout Pennsylvania for the last 15, 20 years. And I will say, some are successes and some aren't successes, but we don't pick the facts. Sometimes we just have bad facts, and that results in a case that we don't necessarily love, but...
Okay, so we'll start another round here. Michelle, anything?
I'm good right now.
All right. So, as you know, social media is a commonplace in society anymore. Although at times, it's an endless black hole. It seems more and more like one of the best avenues to disseminate information to residents. Have you dealt with any specific cases or issues involving social media with your clients? I know that's kind of a very vague, general question.
Yeah, I mean, some municipalities, I don't know if you have a Facebook page?
Yes.
Like to have the Facebook page, and, you know, we've done those policies. Sometimes it's more of a headache than it's worth, if you ask me. But like I said, I don't get the vote, I just get to help you through your decisions. Sometimes it's, I don't know if you would consider emailing social media, but, you know, more, more, more so than not, you have issues with council members, you know, emailing back and forth, and it's more of an open rec, it's more of a sunshine act concern. But social media as a, as a whole, I don't know if I've dealt with problems. Usually, usually they, you know, when they decide to do a Facebook page or decide to do Twitter or whatever else is out there, we'll do the policy, they'll start it. And it usually, they'll either realize it's just creating a headache and it'll just kind of sit then, and they won't, it won't be a real active account, or someone will, you know, just run with it. And it rarely gets back, at least for me, it's rarely gotten back to me. One, one thing, I think initially with the Facebook craze was why, you know, they made, they wanted to accept comments. And I said, that's, you probably don't want to accept. And ultimately, they changed the policy and it's just more of a... I mean, I think where it makes sense is where municipalities just wanna have another, another avenue to get the information out, outside of the website. Meaning, Facebook, if there's something going on in the borough and you want the public to see it, get posted. If, if there's something, if there's an emergency, I mean, I know, I know police departments have, they have programs or apps that they somehow get information out quickly.
We have NICS.
But the more you use it as a way to get the information out, I think, is the way you avoid the headaches and the issues that could develop from using those, those programs. I don't know if you...
The only thing that I've had with Facebook is that whether or not we can take down posts. And, you know, that's situational and what is said, but, you know, there's always people out there that are saying untrue facts that are posting it on social media. And if it's on ours, you can sometimes take it down. If it's on somebody else's, you can't really do anything about it. And that hearsay is gonna churn in every small borough that's out there. And it's unfortunate, but it happens.
Thank you. All right, Manny?
I'm good right now.
Doug?
I think I'm good.
Sam? Brad? You had another one?
No, the representation of developers. I just wanted to make that known, that they don't represent other developers.
Okay, so I have like one or two more, if you just bear with me. So, the remaining time. What steps, if any, do you take to reach out to your clients to advise updated procedures and practices? Obviously, while working on a case, recommendations occur. But if you're working on something for another municipality, let's say, that may pose a problem or a potential problem for the borough of Bath, would you be open to sharing that information with Bath without Bath necessarily reaching out to you?
Yes. So, maybe on a more general view, when there is a change in law or if there's a recent case that comes out, or if there's a new statute that's being amended, like I said, we have so many attorneys that work in the municipal arena. Either we know it's coming, right? We're keeping an eye on, you know, an appeal that's making its way up to the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania. Or we know some legislation has been kicked around and it's gonna be adopted. So, we're, we're usually in a position where when it does become adopted, we can provide a memo. It's not only, wouldn't it just be for Bath, it would be for all of our clients. But if it's for, if the question is more for, if one of my other clients has gone through something or one of Colby's clients is going through something that's a significant headache for the municipality, is causing an uproar, and we know that Bath is in a situation where it might, you know, experience the same issue, yeah, clearly, we can, you know, it'll be something, it's a fiduciary responsibility to let you know, hey, by the way, maybe it's something in your zoning ordinance that is just not right because of these, of the significant adversarial use that's making its way through the Lehigh Valley. And if we look at your zoning ordinance, you've got the same problem, you might want to do this. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I was just gonna say, those memos that come out, somebody will throw out, hey, I would like a memo done on this. And different attorneys will say, I'll take a piece of that. And so, instead of being an hour and a half to one client, it's point two or three to another. So, you're not really getting a huge thing, but you're getting the benefit of the whole memo. And that's something that we deal with, but it's also what you know when you've been working with that municipality for a while. Some people say they don't want it, and they'll just share it at the next meeting, and they won't share the memo. But if you would like that, then we would actually produce that memo too.
All right, so my, my last question to both of you are, what are some of the alternatives to going to court that you prefer or have tried that have been successful? Again, very broad, but just kind of, is that something you try to consider or...
Absolutely.
I would guess, I mean, I'm not an attorney.
Court is the last stop.
Yeah.
You did stay on holiday and express lessons. Can you still use that, or is that...
I, I get it. Yeah, that, yeah. But, no, I guess, so, sometimes, I mean, I'm trying to think. There's a use, right, that maybe the council doesn't like. And I'm thinking back, one of my, one of my municipalities had a, had a use, it was adversarial, but it was zoned for it, right? They weren't, they weren't really asking for any variances or waivers, but it was a conditional use here.
We have one of those.
So, you know, in a conditional use, council or the board of supervisors is in a position where, you know, you gotta hear them out. Your zoning ordinance hopefully has some specific criteria that they have to comply with. But if they comply with that, it's really a use that is permitted on that property, you can zone for it. But in this particular case, you know, I had a, I had a supervisor that just wanted nothing to do with it, wanted to deny it, but there's no, there was no legal basis to deny it. And, you know, in those, when you're deliberating, you know, you gotta ask the question as attorney, so why? Why is it, why, why do you want to deny this? What are the issues? And he take us through all the issues. And I didn't, I was remiss in... The applicant's attorney, there are certain attorneys we get to know throughout the years that they're gonna, they're gonna appeal it, they're gonna litigate it all the way up through the ladder. And it was one of those attorneys, he was a litigious guy, I knew where it was gonna go, we were gonna deny it. But back to the deliberations, you know, you keep asking the questions, why, why do you want to deny? What are your concerns, what are your issues? And ultimately, we came up with a conditional use decision. It probably had 15 conditions in it that, in my opinion, might have been a little bit much, but they were within reason that I felt comfortable with the decision. The supervisor was happy, he voted in favor of the conditional approval, and ultimately, it wasn't appealed. It probably, well, I strike that, it was appealed. But sometimes with a land use appeal, they appeal it for the purposes of trying to come up to a settlement. And that settlement that we ended up with had every one of those conditions with the exception of possibly one. But in that situation, if it would have been an outright denial, which is what one or two of my three-person supervising board wanted to do, it would probably, this was probably a year and a half ago, we'd still be in litigation on appeal. And there's no issues with the use as a currently sits because they're complying with the, with the conditions that were placed on it by the board. So, I don't know if that's, I mean, there's, there's multiple ones. But our goal is always to keep our clients out of court. Rarely, rarely court is, I mean, sometimes you can't avoid it. And sometimes I've had those conversations with my client, and they don't, they don't bend or they don't consider, you know, the, sometimes you say, you know what? We're okay, we're gonna litigate it. We, we feel strongly about what we feel, and we're okay if they appeal it, we're okay with litigating it. Even in the event that I'm telling them, you know, we have an okay case, but it's not the case I would like. Again, getting back to the facts. And if they're okay, eyes wide open going in, you know, I feel like we've, we've done our job at least to let them know, you know, this is maybe a better path, but if you go this path, this is what you have to be aware of.
Any other remaining questions for anybody up here? All right, in the remaining minutes, do either of you have questions or comments for us?
I guess getting back to, do you have a preference? Would you just want one of us at your meetings, or, I mean, it seems like we came to that discussion a couple times. So, I want to make it clear that we're open to either way.
I think council's concern is always, is we like the team in the background supporting. We like the borough in the past, Blake and Jamie were the point. When Blake couldn't make a meeting, then Jamie was there. So, you got to know both. So, if it's like, you two gentlemen, okay, you know, we get it. It's, I think council sometimes gets concerned if it's like, you know, 10 people and we never know what next month, who we're getting, so, you know, we're a small municipality, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think we would prefer a primary person, but then obviously, there's a backup.
Yeah, but I mean, everybody's schedules are, we understand that. That was kind of like, I would not speak for everybody, but yeah.
With Blake and Jamie, yeah. Blake was here a long, long time, and then Jamie started to fill in.
Yeah.
And Blake's another good, he's a good, he's a good attorney.
So, you get comfortable with the questions coming to the meetings?
Right.
Is basically...
And that's, that's how we feel. I mean, if we could just be one face all the time, we'll do it.
Right.
But sometimes it's, I mean, this, I think the way these meetings worked out, if that's what you wanted, we could accomplish it. But we're open to either.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You guys have any? I mean, you've been doing this for a while, so I'm sure a lot of this is just repeating pretty straightforward.
Yes, do you have any questions about the firm in general?
I mean, I personally don't, I don't know if anybody sitting up here does.
How long has the firm been the firm?
1895, 1956.
I'm fourth generation.
I was gonna ask you that, I see grim here.
I was going with second.
So, like, if I go into your office, I'm gonna see the oil paintings of all the generations.
No, no.
Well, you know what, that was a song I sang here.
But, you know, fun fact, he grew up right around the corner. I grew up in Moore Township. My mom still lives out there.
Oh, okay.
Hocking up the drive-in. So, I, I came through Bath all the time as a kid. I still take my kids to, I'm an expert.
Are you a concrete kid?
Yeah.
So am I.
So am I.
Yeah, yeah?
Me too.
Well, I think we all are.
What year did you graduate? I'm getting personal. Me too.
Doug's in New Jersey.
Seventy-five?
Ninety-five.
Oh, my God. I know. Sorry. I take it back.
Ninety-five?
No, I didn't, I didn't hear.
All right, anyway.
That's good to know.
So, thank you for your time, gentlemen. As I said earlier, you know, very soon we'll have a decision, but, you know, I want you to...
That leads me to a question. That leads me to a question. When would the transition begin to take place? Like Jamie's done December 31st.
Then, I, I think that's again, a question for council. I mean, Jamie reached out to me, he said, hey, you know, Bath is gonna be looking, so I submitted it. But ultimately, I don't know what his plan is, I don't know what the council's plan is. So, if you, if you, obviously, if you say you gotta start next week, we've gotta shuffle things around and get ready for it. But if you're telling us council's looking at the end of the year, you want us to start before...
Well, I mean, once we make, sorry. No, once we make the decision, I think the sooner that some of the transitioning begins to get comfortable with everything going on, so you're ready to go when the time comes, January 1st, and you've got all the ducks in a row. And I know Jamie's willing to share everything right away, so once we make the decision, he's ready to share.
I guess the question is, how much time do you feel you need to...
I mean, I know some of what's going on, I probably don't know everything. So, until I know everything that's going on behind closed doors, so to speak, I, I don't feel like I'm ready to answer that. But listen, we've been thrown in some very bad situations, and we've been thrown in the deep end without a life vest. But we, we get our clients through it, and we're, I'm still representing two of them, and I got brought in in a situation like that. Because sometimes you get people through a really bad time, and it makes you stronger, there's a relationship, and every, every other thing that comes down the pike that for maybe a fresh board would seem like a big deal, it's, it's okay, it's not a big deal, we approach it, we handle it, we move on. So, I guess what I'm saying is, well, whatever the situations are, I'm sure we'll be able to get you through it and get up to speed fairly quickly.
I think that we'd almost start right away, but the question of how much you transition.
Right. Sadly, it is a very bad time here.
But such times build character.
Doesn't kill you, makes you stronger.
Doesn't kill you, makes you stronger.
Right, that's right.
I always enjoy the challenge. So, anyway, gentlemen, if there's no further questions, we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And, yeah, you'll be hearing from us either way very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
I take that date back, by the way.
I don't know what I said.
Thank you.
Okay, so, do we have MS4 interviewers here? Or interview?
Interviewees.
Interview, whatever the technical term. So, a question for both of you. Oh, yeah. So, so, council, this is new, now we're starting to formally interview candidates for authorities and boards, okay? So, you're like two and three. We did one last week or two weeks ago, now you're two and three, but anyway. So, my question, this new process is, you are allowed, unlike the solicitors, you can have your meeting with us here in the public setting, or you could have it in exec session. So, that's, each of you can do it differently. You can do it, if you both are comfortable here, we can do them both here. But if you don't like public kind of thing, we can talk in the back.
And just so you know, whether you choose back there or here, it's very, very informal and laid back. This is nothing like a job interview or anything like that, so don't be...
I don't know that.
Basically, in the past, people would get hired and most of the council members didn't even know who they were.
So, we really just wanted to know who it is we're bringing on.
So, this is more of a meet and greet type thing?
Yeah.
Meet and greet, we're gonna have cookies too.
Brian, what do you prefer?
Either work, I can do it.
Come on up.
Okay, all right. And then Pam, what do you prefer?
That's fine.
Really? All right, okay. So, Bron, who wants to go first?
Go ahead.
We'll do it in the back, Lord.
She wants to let the questions on first, and then she's ready, so it's all good.
Change for each candidate, so...
She's no dummy.
Yeah, so, then we're really...
You're hired.
We won't, we won't tie this up. I know it's, there's better things to do in life than in the borough hall and this little stuff, so... So, I mean, both of you, it's gonna be like a joint intro. Thank you for expressing interest in our new authority that's created MS4 authority. The authority currently, it was a committee, now council voted to make it an authority. The authority will consist of five members, three of which are already on the committee, right? They're, they're council members now. We're looking to appoint fresh faces from the public, so that's where we were reaching out, and the two of you applied. So, thank you. So, like Manny had said, and Michelle, it's kind of like an informal meet and greet. Just want to get an understanding where you're coming from. Feel free to ask us questions. We kind of want to see what drove you to the interest of wanting to serve on this committee or getting involved in Bath. So, I guess Bron... So I guess Brian, first, I'd say, did you prepare? Do you have a little intro? You wanna tell us a little bit about yourself?
So, yeah, I'm sure, it's not, I'm not sure what it all entails, right? And I did throw a little bit together, basically, maybe an informal resume, maybe, and 15 years' work experience. I mean, I feel I have good communication, I do work well in teams, strong leadership skills, proficient in Microsoft Office, if that helps with anything, right? Highlights in my last 15 years' work experience with Lutron Electronics. So I did serve as the Health, Safety, and Environmental Leader for the Lutron Metals Facility out in Allentown. Responsibilities, basically driving down TIR and TRIR, basically recordable incidents, anything that lost time. Wasn't an unsafe place, but, you know, any given year, you know, you see 10 to 12 lifting incidents where someone's out a week, and, you know, dealt with a lot of ergonomic stuff like that. I worked with company directors and OSHA to help keep facilities compliant with regulations. I led projects and held safety meetings on a regular basis. I attended outreach programs held by OSHA, LCTI, Northampton Community College, right, benchmarked with other companies, and keep up to date with different safety topics within industry. I did sit on an advisory council board for LCTI at one point, right, that helped decide on, you know, what trends in basically logistics and warehouse, you know, industry should be taught to students. Everybody got their, got their say, got their vote. Currently, working with Global Process Improvements Team, right, we focus on different areas and work cells to improve efficiency and utilization. And develop standard works through setting time expectations and work instructions. I mean, other than that, you know, I'm like heightening setting time.
I'm on Luxor's boot.
I'm sorry, you went to both qualified.
So, go ahead.
What made you decide you wanna be on committee for the borough?
I wanted to get involved, you know, something new. I've never done anything like this before, like borough-wise, right? So I thought it sounded interesting. I think I could be a, be an asset, could be helpful.
Agreed.
Thank you.
There's a lot of things that are still in motion with this authority, because it is brand new. If you're selected, you'd be one of the founding authority members, so to speak. So I know when you inquired, Brad had followed up and gave you some information as far as what the purpose of the board is, did that all kind of make sense to you?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's basically over, seeing right over.
Yeah, so MS4 is this, I'll try not to sound political with it, it's a monetarily costing endeavor pushed down from state and federal authorities to, basically, we're the end of the line of all of this, and we're the smallest fish in the sea as far as money goes, right? So we get audited, I always ask this, is it once a year, twice a year?
Five years.
Every five years, all right. That was close before. So they come out, they look at our storm sewers and all that kind of things, and what are our sediment levels and pollution and all those kinds of things. So the authority was created as a way to, these projects are just kind of thrown down from these higher entities and saying, all right, you gotta put in a retention fund, you gotta do this, or you gotta do that. I guess we can question it, but a lot of the times, the question's between the state or the federal government, you know. I get, I get further talking to this word mallet. So it's just, this is what you have to do. So we really don't have any options, so, all right, what are we gonna do? So one of the things that our legal counsel has advised, this is starting a storm water authority. So yes, you would oversee, you'd be a member of the board to oversee the authority decisions being made, residents, both commercial and residential, potentially testifying in front of the, in front of the authority if they have questions, instituting any fees if there would be fees, all that kind of stuff. So, like I said, it's a moving process, so you'd probably be learning with us, I guess. So there might be some questions that we don't have answers to at this moment. I don't know if that's the best answer, but.
Maybe Brad can add. Can you add?
He covered it.
Yeah.
So, so, all right, councilors, anybody? I have some questions, but I'll let you guys go.
So I guess one question is availability. We're looking at doing the meetings on the same Monday as the council meeting, but starting an hour sooner, which would be like the second Monday of the month at 5:00.
That, that would be fine. Yep, anytime, usually anytime after 4:30 I am available. Like I said, for the month of September, I am gonna be going down to, for Kit Kat for a week or two coming up here, but that's not the usual, travel's not the usual case for what I, what I do.
Commercial, infancy stages too, so I'm worried about that right now.
Yeah.
But that was a good point, good question. Doug or Sam?
Does it work as a form?
Yeah.
It works as a form, right? Okay.
The other thing too, just to interrupt, because I was gonna say something, but for both of you, we're not gonna vote tonight if you're on the authority or not. This was especially just information gathering, but obviously, very soon, we will let you know yes or no, we'll be hanging.
All right, Monday night.
Right, but, sorry.
We're gonna have to vote by Monday night in order to get the.
To keep the process.
There's a time constraint.
Monday night with beer.
So we can get this all set up, so we have to give an answer by Monday.
So there you go.
So you'll know by Monday.
By Monday they are on the authority. You'll know by Monday.
Doug, is there anything you were gonna say?
No, he answered most of it at his introduction. I see, I mean, being a leader, as you had mentioned in, already served on many boards, that you obviously are cast-oriented, being able to provide input to other people and also keeping on track with things, obviously, with a lot of the things that you very roll down. So you are also, also have the ability to roll out plans and implement new policies and all, which is something that's necessary for this position. So that, that's all good, that all came from what you already said. So organizational type things, leadership examples and all. And of course, what those potential things usually comes with some ounce of research, which I'm sure that, you know, will probably come with this job as well, and you're not scared to take on things like this, or you wouldn't be where you are if that weren't so.
Is there an approximate, I know I've asked this before, but the amount of hours? More upfront?
I mean, yeah, I mean.
Probably, yeah, maybe an hour or two a month. We think monthly meetings at least to start, maybe in that first year, then the meetings could wind up being once a quarter, once things are established and off and running. It's a learning process for everybody. Brian, would you be interested in either the two-year or the four-year? Doesn't matter. They're all set by terms.
Right, at this point, yeah, I don't have preference.
Okay, okay.
I think the other point to make, because you would be serving on an authority, it's similar to the, to the Water Authority. So council appoints members, but it's a separate entity. When the Water Authority built a new plant, they had bills, you know, and the bills were increasing, and there were charges, we're all familiar with. So council was getting a lot of calls and complaints and concerns about that, and we had to explain that, yes, but we're also taxpayers, and we maybe feel the same hurt and agree with you. We, they're, they're a separate entity, so it draws a distinct line, so.
It's a very common name, I do learn that at that time, because I thought.
Yeah, so it's, it's like, yes, you, you will have to be appointed by us, but in, in the end, you will serve on a separate, separate board, so. I guess if that makes sense.
Are there any other besides these two people?
No.
No, these are the two out of the.
Did you hear from the third person?
No.
True.
I mean, yeah, I, well, we have to do both interviews.
Right.
This guy's trying to jump ahead.
Well, it could be set into the ordinance.
It may be wild tonight.
The ordinance has to set the names and their places.
Yeah, so I think we have to wait till Monday.
Well, I'm just saying, you, we just need that for the ordinance, whether it's ready now, or you say the names, and then you say who's gonna be chair, treasurer.
I'm just trying to follow the steps.
Okay, so let's do the other interview, and then we can go from there.
Well, now, any more questions for Brian?
I just wanna thank Brian for.
You see where this is going, Brian?
I'm not, I don't have a question, I have a statement. Is that okay?
We need to get to that part of the program.
Okay, go ahead, you're the president.
No, do the statement.
I just wanna say thank you for taking interest in your borough.
Thank you, Brian.
That is my statement, thank you. Go ahead, you're the president.
Give me, what other questions for us?
I do not at this time.
Okay, all right. All right, yeah, so thank you for your time. If you wanna hang around, it sounds like we might end up voting anyway tonight, so. All right.
And then you'll be assigned your refreshment week.
May I introduce Pamela.
See, it wasn't that.
Pamela comes from Longmont.
I'm sorry, I didn't know her, because he sounds so good.
All right, Nancy, you've heard the whole rundown.
I do have a resume, though. I don't know if you wanna.
You can share, council. You may approach the bench.
You may approach the bench.
So Pam, thank you for, for considering this role. Obviously, you heard what we were talking to Brian about, so he took out all the work out of your interview.
That's right.
So, yeah, so is there anything, I guess, first off, any questions you have for us before we start firing any questions your way?
No, I don't think so. I think you answered pretty much of what you were speaking. I did have a little bit of hesitation, just because reading a lot of comments lately about things, you know, you wonder about, is it gonna come back? You know, I'm gonna hear a lot of negative stuff. Oh, they want more money. Oh, you know what I mean? And you're on the committee, so, but there are a lot of times I'd like to speak up on that page, but I feel too, I live by myself, I don't wanna start anything. But, you know, living here pretty much my whole life and growing up here, it does get you sometimes just the negativity in, you know, what people have to say, so.
I guess to the side note, not that that matters, but your experience in the borough from your aunt, from your father, you know, over uncles, all the years of all that, so you know where you're getting involved in, and your life experiences thus far, even before being involved in or any of this, so. What's your thoughts on Water?
Oh, my gosh.
We need it.
Seems good to me. All right, I guess, can you, now, can you just give us a little background, like what you do? Have you passed out the resume, or just a quick recap?
Well, I started out in Muleburg years ago as an executive secretary to the controller, and then I had my children, so I was home for about 20 years. And then, when they got older, I went back to work. So I was a transcriptionist at Northampton School District for a hearing of their student that I was with until he graduated. And then I had his brother for a year, so I went from, with them from class to class, transcribed everything the teachers would say, so that they would, could read it on their laptop and keep track of what was going on, and then I would print out the notes for them for the end of the day, so they could go back, review them if they needed help with their homework. Then I left there, when he graduated, I went to Northampton County, where I work right now. I started out in the Civil Division in the Sheriff's Department. I processed all the PFAs, and, which is very interesting, and all the complaints and things from attorneys. So that's what I did for the most part, and I just got a promotion, and I am now in Human Resources as a clerical specialist.
Good for you.
Okay. Questions from council, Pam?
You can ask your availability question.
I have no life, so I'm available.
She likes water and has no.
And I walked, because I'm right there.
There you go.
That's good if there's an emergency, you're guarding for water.
Yeah, they have a square mercy.
So all the traffic in town will keep you from making meetings.
No, no, all right. Although halfway here, I thought to myself, maybe I should have drove.
And did you hear, she can transcribe, so she can be your note taker?
She can transcribe, yeah.
I can. I'm having a little bit of issue with my hand, but I, you know, was very fast type of, I just.
So Brad had asked a question to Brian, and I think it's fair to ask as far as the term preferences.
Two or four?
Yeah, I don't think so. Maybe start with two, go from there. I'm older.
That makes a decision.
When that attorney said 95, I was like, what?
I know, right?
So.
He's a baby.
He is a baby. I know, that was, I was like, oh, God, I know.
Is there, all right, so, not to, you know, so is any questions from council?
No.
All right. Any questions, Pam, from?
No, I think when you were speaking before, I kinda took it all in.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, I guess that's.
Am I allowed to make my statement now?
Oh, sorry, I didn't know you were gonna make another statement.
I just wanna thank you for taking interest in your borough. I wish more people would get involved.
With my family background, I think my father would be very disappointed if I had to have told him.
So we appreciate it, we really do.
Thank you, Pam.
All right, yeah, so feel free to relax as we mull over this decision. What does council prefer? Do we need an exec session, or?
I'll make a motion to appoint Pam and Brian.
What would your terms be?
Oh, it's two terms, I apologize. So I would like to appoint Pam for a two-year role in the MS4 Water Authority, and Brian for a four-year term in the MS4 Water Authority. Sick.
All right, so that was firsted by Michelle, and seconded by Manny. Any questions from council? Hearing done, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Welcome, welcome. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Now, we're gonna have an exit interview, because I don't know what did we do right or wrong in one of these initial interviews. All right, so you're welcome to stick around, you're welcome to leave, whatever you prefer. Thank you again for your interest, and Brad, obviously, will disseminate more information to you as this unfolds, so thank you again.